Okay, call meeting to order at six o'clock. Ms. Marshall, you want to call roll? Okay.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Fauch?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
Quamis present, your honor.
Thank you. Could please rise, Ms. White will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Father, for giving us the opportunity to gather here, Lord. We have a special situation, so we need special insight from you and wisdom. Father, let our decisions be fair and honest. Lord, we thank you for our city, we thank you for those who serve. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord, Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, on special call, we're not going to have any minutes to approve. We have no communications, we have no presentations. Let's call the special call, Ms. Marshall.
Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mary Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, April the 20th, 2015, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. All business from the previous regularly scheduled meeting will be on the agenda as announced. Additionally, the following ordinance will be added. Oh, 1530, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages of the North Little Rock Municipal Code regarding taxes and fees assessed for sales on on-premises consumption and retail sales and/or distribution of alcohol and for other purposes sponsored by Mary Jo A. Smith. A copy of the proposed ordinance is attached heretofore for your reference. Pursuant to Section 2-48, 2 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, you entitled to 72 hours' electronic notice of this meeting. Please acknowledge receipt of this email as soon as possible by replying to the same. A copy of reply will be automatically be sent to City Clerk Diane Whitby, C. Jason Carter, City Attorney.
Thank you so much. I think what I'd like to do is, let's do this oh fifteen thirty first and get it out of the way, and then we'll go into the other two from last meeting. So, we've read oh fifteen thirty, how about a motion to suspend the rules?
So move.
Second.
On the motion to suspend.
On the motion to suspend. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mayor, is it? Yeah, read it, and then I'll explain it.
May the spin the rules placed on second reading.
But he needs to read it the first time.
Oh, I thought you already read it. Okay, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages in the North Little Rock Municipal Code regarding taxes and fees assessed for the sale of on-premise consumption and retail sales and/or distribution of alcohol. Second reading. First reading.
First reading, okay. Now, we can suspend the rules.
You read it.
Suspend the rules. Go ahead. The first one Linda said doesn't count, so that was our first reading. May I suspend the rules and place it on second reading?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, let me explain really quickly what this is. We have, we do not have a provision in our ordinance to allow partial payment or prorated payments. So if someone comes in in April, which they did last week, and wanted to pay for their $500 for a liquor permit, they would have to pay the entire year. The state allows you to divide those by half. So basically, all this is doing is being, giving us the ability to prorate in half if someone signs up before the end of the year. Correct. Ms. Robinson.
Well, being a part of the advertising, you know, commission and all, you know, I don't think, I wasn't aware, you know, of us going about doing this. And what I'd like to see us do is to hold this and discuss this with, you know, the hotels and the restaurants and places. Resident voting on it tonight.
It was, it was raised to our attention, I guess, with, with a permittee who was coming in and kind of requesting that, kind of pushed the impetus to move for the provision where we prorate for six months at a time. But actually, in response to Alderman Robinson, the AMP Commission has been involved in a, in rewriting this. Mark's done a whole lot of work on this, and Paula Jones, who represents, out of my office, represents the AMP Commission, has done a lot of work on it, where they were already kind of preparing some amendments to go forward, when we had the additional impetus to go ahead and file this as a special call. We, we were actually planning to have something on the agenda at the next meeting, anyway. So, that just-
Well, do we have to rush through this tonight? Can we hold it till the next meeting?
I wouldn't make the decision on that. I think that that's something in the discretion of the council.
Mr. Witcher?
All right, may I ask Mr. Carter? Okay, are we increasing any fees?
The fees are not going up. There was some discussion that we had fees that haven't increased in a long time. There was a little bit of discussion about that, but that was not the intent of this ordinance. It was just intended to allow fees to be prorated. There are penalty provisions in this that had been discussed. We're just trying to match up with how our AMP ordinance works and how state law works and get some more consistency there.
Ms. Ross?
I was just going to say, this is to a business, this is an advantage to a business. This is not a disadvantage to a business.
Exactly.
Now, if they don't pay on time, then no, it's not to their advantage, but it's definitely not to the city's advantage either if they're not paying on time. So, that's the only difference. It's to their advantage.
Ms. Height?
My question is to Mr. Carter. On Section 662, refers to hotel restaurants permit fee, these are the fees that are in place now and are not changing, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Anything that's not underlined or have a strike through is not changing. It just reflects the verbiage as it is. And I really don't want to steal Marsh Thunder over there. He's done a lot of work on this, and, and he's probably more of a subject matter expert on the why as to what the changes are than I am.
That's okay. Then, then, then my question would be then, the only thing that this ordinance does is allows for a prorated payment.
It does, it does add some penalty provisions.
And adds penalties to those people that don't pay on time, correct?
That's correct.
I didn't think it was a big enough deal to, you know, I've got, I've got a restaurant, a brand-new restaurant and bar owner right now that's on hold, and he's, he's serving alcohol without having a license because I asked him to hold off. So, if, if I have that executive privilege, then I don't mind holding it as long as he can stay in business until we can get this satisfied. It's going to save him $250. Ms. Ross?
Mayor?
Vote.
Ms. Ross?
I don't see any reason to hold it. One of the things, too, Clark Whitby is going, I don't know, Mark, when y'all send out your notices and everything, because I'm, you know, they're going to print, have to print new forms with the penalty fee listed on it. So, I'm assuming that July is coming up quickly. That's also the reason, is so we can send the notices out with the renewals, so they have enough time to be printed and the newspaper, to give the businesses time to realize that in July 1st, that's when this will go into place, the penalties.
Ms. Height?
I don't have any problem with, with going ahead and moving on with tonight. I think Alderman Robinson and I, before, we thought there was a new tax being added or additional taxes being added, and that's not the case. So in this, in this case, it's going to keep the honest people honest, and the, and the people that aren't paying on time is going to make them ante up, correct?
Correct. It's mostly about prorating. Mr. Fauch?
Well, if your intent is to move this forward as quickly as possible, without a statement on here declaring this is an emergency, how long will it take for this to become effective?
Mr. Carter?
The, the penalty provisions would only become effective upon publication, so it wouldn't be enforceable like that for a period of 60 days. That's where our ordinance works. However, the proration part that actually works to the advantage of our business, if you look in Section 10, would be retroactive to January 1st. So anyone who has paid after the fact would, you know, for half the year, they would get the benefit of that.
Okay. Mr. Witcher?
Maybe suspend the rules and place it on its third reading.
Second.
Is it the second reading or the third?
The third.
Okay. Mark, go ahead.
An ordinance amending Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages in the North Little Rock Municipal Code regarding taxes and fees assessed for sale of on-premise consumption and retail sales and/or distribution of alcohol. Third reading.
Do I have a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
On the motion. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, let's go into the old legislation, and we've got several people signed up to speak. I want to remind everybody of our rules that you have a three-minute time limit. I will be the timekeeper, and I certainly don't want to be rude, so I will just raise my hand when your three minutes is up, if you'll try to wrap up at that point in time. We've got three, six, about nine people. And so I'll just go right down the list. First one is Dr. Zweifler, Doc Z.
It's pretty neat with a name like Zweifler, you can narrow it down to one initial. Good evening. The mayor said, "My name is Dr. Michael Zweifler. I own commercial property that is directly adjacent to the proposed Lindsay Apartment Accent Road Development Project under consideration." It's a pleasure to have these few moments, three minutes to be exact, to share some thoughts that include, but are not limited to, my property, but involve other adjacent properties. I consider this a privilege, but also a requirement to voice my thoughts and feelings, as I am not only a property owner, but a corporate taxpayer and a huge fan of doing business in North Little Rock. My corporate neighbor to my immediate west, Ms. Sarah Keithley, owns an auto repair facility of longstanding, next to my commercial property. She couldn't be here tonight, but my commercial property soon, within the next few months, will, will house a full-service, first-class, totally digitized, state-of-the-art dental clinic. Ms. Keithley and I are all too aware of the cost of building roads, infrastructure, and bearing the cost of class type A development on Young Road, as evidenced by our full participation in SID number 33 over the past couple of years. Our commitment has resulted in a game-changing direction for the betterment of Young Road and Crystal Hill area, which brings me directly to my point. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council and you, Mr. Mayor, the importance and timeliness of this opportunity, one that may never come up in the future, one that can be commenced with as of your vote tonight, is as follows. Please do as Ms. Keithley and I have done, which is to act in the interest of the existing area, the tax base, what is best for city's assets, and foremost, a major catalyst for expediting the additional development of the Crystal Hill Corridor. Activity breeds activity.
Three minutes, Mike.
I'm, I'm already done? I'm sorry. I will say, let's make this night a success, let's get this show on the road, and vote the amended street plan. I respectfully submit this on my behalf and with Ms. Keithley's permission. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
While that went quick.
It does go, it does go in a hurry. Alan Hope?
It's an honor to be before you today. I want to pass around some pictures. I have copies there. My name is Alan Hope. I'm the CEO and owner of a company called Powers of Arkansas. We were the 2010 Arkansas Business of the Year Award winners for our category. We have over, of this date, we just hired some more since I sent out some emails, we have over 136 employees, and we have customers from all over the state that come to our facilities for training, for information, and to be part of our business. Granted, I would say we have a dramatic impact of thousands that come to North Shore Business Park, that come to North Little Rock, thousands of people that come through there. So we're at a crossroads here in the sense that we've always wanted another entrance into that, that business park, for the simple reason for safety, number one. I'm the last guy on the road. If you go, I'm the last guy right before the White Oaks or a pond, okay? So I'm, I'm the guy out there, so. But to get emergency vehicles into our facility, it's really tough, as you can see from the pictures, because of the traffic. Certain times of day, I hate to think of what would happen if we had a fire, or worse, if we had somebody with a heart condition or something that needed immediate help. We are really in need of this, not just because of the traffic situation you see there, but it also will promote the business park, so that we can grow the business for North Little Rock. It'll be a win-win for everybody, if we can have another connector road out to Crystal Hill Road. Our, our employees, I asked them not to come tonight. Last week, I had about 100 people that wanted to come and fill up this room and talk to you. I asked them, "Let me speak for the group, if you would." On my emails, you saw the people I copied and everything on that, those are just my employees that I copied. Those weren't anybody else. I didn't put that out to the general public. One of the things we know is that North Little Rock has been good for our business. North Little Rock has been good for Powers of Arkansas. I'm asking you for relief from the congestion that we have and the potential safety problems we have with that business park as it is. If you could give us another entrance, it would dramatically improve our business. I'm in the, I'm in, currently in the process of trying to hire over another 40 or 50 people. I need to expand my building, I need to make it bigger. But how could I, in good conscience, expand right there in that location if I already have problems as it is? My staff and my customers can't get to me, and for sure, the emergency vehicles couldn't. So, with that, I would ask you to please give us the extension out to the Crystal Hill Road, through or around the apartment complex, however, however the engineers figure that out, give us that ability to get that extra one. I often thought maybe you'd give us one into Burns Park, but we'd rather have that one right there, it'd be a lot more efficient. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Alan. Bob Hardin?
Well, I represent the Pfeiffer Family Partnership, who is a proponent for keeping the master street plan at its current configuration, and has been striving very hard in the last several weeks to come up with a financial plan to build the whole road, and to build it now according to the financial, according to the master street plan, in conjunction with the, with the project being complete, that we hope is completed by the Lindsay Company. Now, tonight, I just want to kind of bracket my purposes to kind of introduce some other witnesses who will, not witnesses, but speakers to you, who are far more knowledgeable about the street plan and what's happening, particularly Mr. Ernie Peters, who has done a traffic study. And I would like for most of this to be done as requested, is what's in the best interest of the city, the list of Mr. Peters, and to know that we can work very clearly, Mr. Pfeiffer is committed to come with a financial plan, so that this entire road can be built in cooperation with the city and Mr. Lindsay. That's our purpose. We have, I've furnished a lot of information to each of you out there, so that you know some of the things that have been going. We've been in talks with the mayor and the city, and trying to figure out a way to get this done, and make it done in a way consistent with, with the build-out for Lindsay, and a way that is good for the business park. And so, with that, I'd really like to concentrate on Mr. Peters coming up and telling about safety, and give him as much time as you can, because lawyers really don't know much, other than Mr. Toll, who's here, and he might have a word about this, and Mr. Pfeiffer may have some comments, particularly regarding what he's heard from some of the other owners in the business park and things that, and the public support for it. Because we have moved some hearing stuff off from last week to this week, and because we had some people that were coming up to, to talk about their preferences, they aren't here tonight, but I think Mr. Pfeiffer can relate the public support for the master street plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Ernie, that was a good introduction for you.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and council members. I'm Ernie Peters with Peters and Associates Engineers in Little Rock. And we were asked by Gene Pfeiffer to do a traffic study related to this area, in particular the development that has been proposed by Lindsay Development, which we are assured, because of our previous work with Lindsay Company, that it will be a quality development. We studied in particular, three time periods, the AM peak hour period, the school PM peak hour period, and the traditional four to six PM peak hour period. As y'all made know firsthand, and certainly those such as the representative from the Powers Company that live or work in, in this area, or own business in the area, there are some existing problems, primarily at the intersection of North Shore and Crystal Hill, and also at North Shore Drive and Young Road, Cook's Landing. It's particularly pronounced during the PM peak hour and the school PM peak hour, but also during the AM peak hour for the outbound traffic from the school, where parents have dropped off kids, and then they're departing and going back home, perhaps. There is some excessive queuing, there's a lot of congestion, there are some excessive delays at the Young Road and North Shore Drive intersection. What we did, in addition to looking at the existing traffic conditions during those three time intervals that I mentioned to you, we also estimated the traffic based on known empirical data and reliable factors for estimating future traffic volumes for the apartment development, so that we could look at what the future traffic volume conditions, operating conditions could be at those two key intersections. We did that, we took into account the fact that there would be some additional access point on Crystal Hill Road, assuming that they, that portion of the existing master street plan that is not proposed to change is in fact built. So that would be available to existing, to a degree, and the future traffic associated with apartment development. But we also assumed that the proposal to change the master street plan, in effect, to a line down to Young Road would take place. With that, to cut to the findings relative to that, we found that there will be considerably more delay at the Crystal Hill and North Shore Drive intersection. This is very pronounced, in particular during the AM peak hour, because the apartment residents that will be departing and perhaps going to work or other locations during the AM peak hour, which is a very pronounced peak, and the volumes are in the order of magnitude of 140 additional vehicles during that time period, will compete directly with those departing motorists from the school. So that's probably the worst time period. We found that that intersection would be gravely under capacity should that additional traffic be loaded there. We did assume 32% would come and go via the new connection to Crystal Hill Road, but recognizing that there would be still a lot of gravity towards the I-40 corridor, that the majority of it would go that direction. We find, in conclusion, that there's no compelling reason to change the master street plan as has been proposed. We believe that the current master street plan alignment, as it's been, can be refined, and has been worked out with some of the engineers, will better serve not only the proposed Lindsay Apartment Development Project, but also serve, to a much greater extent, the existing and the future businesses on the rest of the North Shore Business Park. And additionally, with that existing master street plan alignment going around the north side and east side of the mountain, that it would be a more likely intersection on Crystal Hill Road to have a future traffic signal. So we believe that there's no compelling reason to change the master street plan, and in fact, it will better serve the area if it can be built as it's planned now. I'll be available later for questions, should there be any. Thank you.
Thank you. You took Bob's minute that he saved for you, and you took a minute from John. So John, you want to say anything?
Real briefly, your honor, honorable counsel, honorable mayor, Mr. Peters has presented you with hard facts. He was hired by Gene Pfeiffer, but he's presented you with-
John, introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm John Toll. I'm with the law firm of Quattlebaum Grooms and Toll in Little Rock, and I represent Pfeiffer Family Limited Partnerships. Mr. Peters has presented you with hard facts, not hypotheticals, but hard facts. If you allow this amendment, the problem gets worse. There are alternatives. The alternatives, for some reason, have not borne fruit, but there's no reason that they can't. I find that my clients get in trouble when you have a rush, a rush to make a decision. And that's what you are being asked to do, is to rush to make a decision. And what you're doing, if you, if you allow this to go forward, is you are putting a gun to your, to the head and playing Russian roulette for every parent that drops their child off to school, for every family whose family member works out there, because you are one accident, one catastrophic event, from a real catastrophe to the city. And all, all you need to do is say, "No, let's wait, let's take more time and figure out a better solution." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I've said it over and over again, what I wanted was a win-win for the city, for the Lindsay Development, for all of the businesses in the business park, and for the future development of the business park to produce more taxpaying businesses for you folks. And I think that's still achievable, and I've been working toward that since early in January, when I first got the notice of this change in the master street plan, which was a complete surprise, and I've been working on it ever since. You've, you've heard, you've heard from the principal of the elementary school with 700 kids, you've heard from the organization that has 80 special needs kids, you've heard from ADEQ with almost 300 employees, and the only state agency that we've been able to attract in North Little Rock, when the state capital's in Little Rock. And you've heard from the hospital with 14 doctors, and you've heard from a whole bunch of other businessmen, not a single one of which has less than $2 million invested in your city, in response to the economic development efforts of our city to bring more businesses over here like them. And all of these people have been pleading with you based on the very real fact that there already have been several periods of several hours at a stretch when emergency vehicles could not get in or out of the business park. This is frightening to me, and I, I hope you have some concern about it. And you've been hearing about how every day, in and out of the business park, that intersection is stressed beyond capacity. And what you're contemplating doing here is only going to make it worse, as the traffic consultant just told you. And, and your corporate and institutional citizens in this community have been begging you not to do this. Now, I've heard today from one of you aldermen, that the possibility has been floated of adding a second left turn lane out of the business park at North Shore Drive and Crystal Hill Road. I didn't know anything about this, neither did Ernie Peters when he was doing his study, but I got wind of this in time to run it by him, and I'd like to cede the rest of my time- time for him to address briefly what is wrong with what, how likely or unlikely it would be to be able to do a second left turn to solve this present problem. Mayor, may I ask Ernie to come forward and talk about-
Do it in a minute, Ernie.
Thank you.
These extra minutes, and I appreciate it. I looked very briefly at this, as Gene conveyed to me this afternoon, this prospect, and having a dual left turn lane from a side street onto a highway is generally a good idea where you've got two lanes to turn into. However, at this location, the width on North Shore Drive simply is not there to accommodate that. It would also require special traffic signal phasing at the intersection of North Shore and Crystal Hill that would require the highway department's approval, and it would require that the North Shore Drive and the Church Drive be what we call split phase. They would run at different times. Highway Department isn't real inclined to go with that type of phasing, because it's not as efficient as what is out there now. So I'm not saying it's impossible, it would take considerable construction and some cost, and would require approval concurrence by the city in North Little Rock, of course, but approval by the highway department since Crystal Hill is a state highway.
Thank you, Ernie. Our traffic engineer has talked to the highway department, by the way, and that is one of our stoplights, which we control, so. Matt Chandler?
Mayor and council, I would just say that we support the amending of the Master Street Plan. I have spoken with most of you, I didn't get ahold of all of you, but I think you know our position, I would answer any questions if you had any in a minute.
Thank you. Hugh Jarrett?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name's Hugh Jarrett, work for the Lindsay Company in Fayetteville. We just came to North Little Rock because you all have been a great city to work with. We want to build our development and cooperate with the city. We have offered throughout this process to comply with the amendment, we've offered to stub the street straight into Mr. Pfeiffer's property, we've offered to cooperate with running the road on another alignment along the north side of our property. At this point, we'll cooperate, as long as our costs and everything are the same, we don't necessarily care, we just want to build a, our development here in North Little Rock, which we think is going to be a very good development. However, we have three different landowners that we have contracts with, and the due diligence periods on those contracts are running out. So we need to have some kind of certainty as to if we can move forward or not. Just because something might be amended tonight, and I'm not pushing one thing anyway, that does not mean if some certainties were put in place, Mr. Pfeiffer and the Chancellors and all of us got together and we came up with something, it can still, we'd come right back and support that. But we want to cooperate with the city in any way we can, and if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to, at y'all's request.
Thank you. Bart Patton?
Evening. I'm Bart Patton. I work in the Office Park. I don't represent anybody but myself, private individual. I've worked there for five years, and I'll just, as a user of the roads and the traffic light and Crystal Hill, I'd just like to add my credence to what Mr. Pfeiffer has said. That intersection is stressed beyond capacity. On the day in March, if you recall, where we had sleet and freezing rain coming down at about 4:00, between 4:00 and 4:30, it was almost an hour to get from inside the Office Park down to Crystal Hill Road, because of all the traffic. And other days, it's not quite that bad, but you basically can't leave at 4:30, or you're going to be stuck at the light for another 15 minutes. You might as well just sit at your desk and twiddle your thumbs. Please don't stress that light anymore, if you can avoid it. We would really appreciate access from North Shore Place out to Crystal Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is all of the comments on this particular legislation. You know, we need a secondary access, and the Lindsay Group is willing to provide that secondary access. So, you know, if, when we approve, if we approve this legislation tonight, this new Master Street Plan will have a secondary access be off of Young Road. The engineers tried to reach an economically feasible resolution, was unable to be reached. So with that, I'm prepared to call the legislation. Could you read the first ordinance, oh, 1521? Ms. Marshall?
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located in the 7, 7,500 block of Young Road.
Mayor, are you calling oh, 1521 or 22? I was asking, because you made comments about the Master Street Plan.
22, it doesn't matter.
I was just trying to make sure we're-
All right, let's go ahead and do 22 then, oh, 1522.
An ordinance amending the Master Street Plan, ordinance number 8601, to realign the proposed Collector Street of North Shore Lane in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Of motion?
May the rules placed on second reading.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the Master Street Plan, ordinance number 8601, to realign the proposed Collector Street of North Shore Lane in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
May the rules placed on third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the Master Street Plan, ordinance number 8601, to realign the proposed Collector Street of North Shore Lane in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Please for adoption.
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
I just have a question for the gentleman, the engineer that did the traffic study.
Ernie?
Yes, sir.
My question is, you said, or I think I heard you to say, that, that the possibility of getting a traffic signal at, at the current location of the, of the road on the Master Street Plan would be likely, correct?
It would be more likely, in my opinion, because on its current alignment, it will serve a greater number of businesses and potentially have more traffic attracted to that intersection, and there are certain volume criteria that have to be met before the state would allow a signal at that location. So, yes, with the Master Street Plan under its current alignment, it has a much better chance of getting a signal than what it would with the more limited service that the amended Master Street Plan would offer.
And that's strictly based on the alignment coming off of, off of this road?
If it is amended as proposed, it would tie into Young Road and would serve the Lindsay Development and a limited number of businesses along Young Road. There could be some traffic conceivably that might try to cross North Shore Drive and use the new alignment to go up to the north, but it would just serve a much greater number of businesses and future businesses, I might add, and the volume is more likely to be there with the current alignment.
Mr. Fauch?
Young Road connects to North Shore Drive, how far from the light? How many feet? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
It's about 350 feet.
About 350 feet. This picture that was handed out with this backlog of traffic, how far is the school, this location, this picture, from Young Road?
I'm not familiar with those photographs, I can't speak to that.
I might be able to answer that.
Okay.
It's about a quarter of a mile, if I'm correct.
Okay, so what you're-
About, and let me ask Mr. Pfeiffer if I'm correct in my, and the way I know that is I've ridden my bicycle down, up and down that hill that comes down from Young Road down to the Crystal Hill Elementary, and it's about a quarter of a mile to the entrance of that school, to the intersection of North Shore Business Park and Young Road. Am I-
That's, that's correct, and any accident or blockage in that quarter mile totally prevents the planned Master Street Plan from providing a second entrance for the business park, as the mayor just suggested that it would do. Any accident along that stretch prohibits, and the presumption would be that someone coming out of the business park would drive up to the corner of Young Road and North Shore Drive, where they're 350 feet from the existing signal, and instead of waiting their turn, having waited all that time to get there, they would turn right on Young Road and drive around on your revised Master Street Plan, which Mr. Peters, the traffic consultant, has told you in the study is highly unlikely that they would do. Thank you.
And now, I'm going to use Scenic Hills as an analogy. We approved apartments up on the back end of Scenic Hill many years ago for, on Tech Drive. That is a street shot up Pershing Boulevard, 40 miles an hour, yet from the time those apartments opened, since I live on that hill, we've had an increased flow of traffic that traverses that hill at supposedly 25 miles an hour. I see a bunch of the people who live in these apartments on the backside of that finding it easier to come out of the backside of that, hit Young Road, traverse up to the North Shore Boulevard and hit the light until a new traffic light is built or proposed or whatever, but the very least are not driving all the way through the apartment complex up to Crystal Hill Road and finding another light. It's much shorter to revert back there. Whether that adds an additional 50, 100, 150 cars per day, they're still going to be flowing through that, I perceive that to be flowing through that intersection, so I just think it's going to add to it, yeah?
The new intersection, or the-
The, as, right now, because what it's going to do is this, as proposed, would move it on to Young Road, and Young Road, however much distance that is, it's not that far from where that road's going to be up to the, to the, to the North Shore Drive, and then you have a light 350 feet away. Or the people who live on the backside of that, right next to Young Road, are going to drive all the way through the apartment complex, all the way through that proposed extension from the apartment complex to Crystal Hill Road and then go. That's, driving through the apartment complex is what, 10, 15 miles an hour if they obey what's in there, or jump on Young Road, zip down, and you're on North Shore, and it's just a matter of a few minutes. So you're going to increase the volume of traffic that's, that's jumping on there also. To what extent, I don't know.
Ms. Robbins?
My concern is that a year ago, we talked about this and discussed it, and we discussed the problems and what needed to be done, and that is why, you know, we added this to, you know, the Master Street Plan a year ago. And so my thing is, as I sit here, and I'm listening, and I'm reading, and my thing is, what has changed? It was a problem a year ago, and from my standpoint, it's still a problem. I'm not against any development out there. Matter of fact, I want development out there, but I think that the current Master Street Plan that we voted on and that we thought what was needed a year ago, I just think that we should stick with it, and that's why my vote has been no.
On the motion.
Maurice has his-
Mr. Taylor?
What, I mean, can I ask a question? Like, money's not an object, you know, and it's just a question, but since, since there's, there's a lot of money in this business park, there's a proposed development of a 410-unit apartment complex, which is going to increase the traffic, and there's the possibility for more development in the business park, which really means that we need even more of an outlet. Money's no object, but in reality it is, but what would be, what would be the issue with building that leg and this leg that connects and then out of the apartment, out of the park and out of the apartment complex?
Well, there wouldn't, you could certainly do that if money was no object, absolutely.
Whoever would like to answer it. It's just a question, it's just, I mean, me and, me and my mind, when I'm just like laying in bed at like 3:00 AM thinking about this stuff, that was, that was my solution, because inevitably, the volume of traffic is going to get to the point where you're going to need both of them. So why, why don't we have a plan to where we, where we figure out a way to do them both, where you have, you have a, an extension that relieves traffic from the business park, and then you have an extension that relieves traffic from the apartment complex? That's just my 3:00 AM thought.
Well, Hugh Jarrett and I have been negotiating, I think, I know in good faith on my part, and I have every reason to think in good faith on his part, since before the first planning commission meeting. And we got right up to the eve of that, and we didn't get anything settled, and, and the planning commission got delayed 30 days, and we continued to negotiate, and a lot of stuff went back and forth, and, and it went through the planning commission, and then it got put on your agenda for two weeks ago, and we continued negotiating, and we put that off, and we negotiated up to last week, and we've been negotiating this week. And, and I think that is a possibility. I think, given some time, and, and some, I, I think, I, I think that, that, that an undue amount of pressure has been put upon me, and an undue amount of leniency has been expressed toward the apartment developer and Chandler, that they wouldn't have to spend one penny more money. And I think that some pressure from the mayor in these off-the-record meetings that we've had, I think that some pressure from the mayor to make the other two parties give the way I have felt pressure to give could result just in that. I mean, the Chandler property is going to be vastly improved by whatever we do, and Matt doesn't want this road out there. He's, he's, in my opinion, he's sort of played the victim, like, I wish I didn't have the road at all, but I'd let it happen. I can't think of any real estate developer that I've ever known or talked to about this that doesn't believe honestly that this improves the Chandler property, gives them two corners at a new intersection that, according to Mr. Peters, can have a traffic signal. It's called a torn order, Gene. Beg your pardon? Answer his question instead of editorializing. And, and, and I believe that the apartment project can be vastly improved by not having a road through the middle of it, with half the buildings across a collector street from the swimming pool, playgrounds, and other amenities. And so we've been working on this, and I'm certainly willing to continue negotiating. I would hope, I want it to be a win-win. The people in the business park, as you've heard from all of them, they need another entrance. And the apartment project, you need, you need 414 heads and beds in this town, as our previous mayor used to say for 25 years, heads and beds, and you need to sell your property. We all need something out of this, and I think by working, continuing to negotiate, we can get there. So have I answered your question? I've certainly-
Pretty much.
We, the Lindsay's have said that negotiations will not stop. We just have to approve this legislation tonight so that they can go forward with closing their contracts, and in the next four, five, six months, if they can work out a deal that, that works for Gene and works for the Lindsay Group, then great, and we'll come back and tweak it.
I have one more question.
Go.
For, goodness, I can't even remember your name, no, 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 the guy in the back that works for the city.
Chris.
Chris.
Come up to the mic, Chris.
What's his name?
One more question for What's His Name.
Mr. What's His Name?
I've been called worse.
I promise you-
I'm glad I make such a good impression.
Yeah, actually, you do, sir. What are your thoughts, just on, on this realignment?
I'm supportive of it. I think the new alignment provides an alternative entrance, it is an emergency entrance. I, I've reviewed the traffic study done by Ernie Peters. You know, I don't want to get too technical on it, but I disagree with the directional distribution of how much traffic he thinks will go to North Shores and Crystal Hill versus the amount of traffic that would end up using the new developed road that goes out to Crystal Hill.